You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the February 21st, 2024 meeting of La Porte County Commissioners Workshop. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot accesslaporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. We are gathered today so that we can have a workshop and RWE will be presenting. So I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to pass it to Emily. What we'd like to do is they're going to do a presentation first and then when they're done with their presentation, then we'll have a question and answer. And at that point, when she's ready for, once she's done the presentation, we'll have people come up and respectfully be able to come to the mic and ask questions and give them the opportunity to answer. Thank you.
Thank you so much for commissioners for putting together this workshop. Thank you all so much. Can you hear me okay? There we go. Is that any better? Excellent. Thank you so much for coming out today. We're really thrilled for the opportunity to do an informational session. See if that's better. Informational session on the Blue Sim Solar Project that we've been developing since 2020. And also a listening session. We're here to hear whatever questions you all have. RWE, we're an owner operator of solar projects. We're the second largest owner operator of solar in the United States. And so we're here for the entire duration of the project, which is unlike other developers. So as a long-term, hopefully future neighbor of you all, we really want to listen to what you have to say and fold that into the design as best we can. So I'm Emily McDuff. I'm the developer on this project, Blue Sim Solar. With me are two other colleagues from RWE.
Can you guys hear me? My name is Hanaya Davis. I do community engagement, similar to public relations for RWE Clean Energy.
Hey everybody. My name is Mark Kegel. I'm the pre-construction project manager. So support in the technical and construction matters. Thank you guys for having us.
And we'll give a brief overview of the project and solar technology we brought. An example, solar panel for you all too. If you want to come feel it, look at it. And then we'll open it up. Like Connie said, if anybody has questions, we are all ears. That's why we're here today. So the Blue Sim Solar Project, it's a 400 megawatt solar project. Like I said, we've been developing it since 2020. So there are a number of La Porte families who decided to sign up to this project, bring in stable diversified income for their families for the duration of the project, 35 years. And it's a complementary land use to traditional agriculture. So it's a way to bring in electricity rather than harvest sun for corn or soybean, harvesting sun for homegrown energy domestic electricity. And so in addition to supporting local families and keeping that land within families in La Porte County and keeping that land as zoned agriculture throughout the duration of the solar project, this project's going to bring a number of additional benefits to La Porte County. Number one, it's going to produce electricity enough for 26,000 homes. So it's a lot of electricity. There are 5,900 megawatts of coal plants that are retiring in the next six years. And we need to somehow replace that electricity, whether it be with natural gas or solar electricity. So this is just one way to add to our base of electricity so we can keep powering the lights and powering microphones like we're doing here today. Another benefit of the project, it's going to create hundreds of local specialized jobs in La Porte County and in the state of Indiana. And in addition, during the two to three years of construction, it'll bring in a lot of dollars in terms of hotels, restaurants, other community assets that we have here in La Porte County. In addition, this project is going to provide 50 to 100 million dollars of new tax benefit to La Porte County over the 35 year duration of the project. And that's because the land that's participating in solar currently as ag land, it's assessed at $2,280 per acre. But if it's assessed as utility distributable solar land, it's assessed at $13,000 an acre. And so that additional 50 to 100 million dollars over the lifetime of the project can be used to reduce your tax rates. I'm sure the commissioners will want to hear, talk to you more about that. Or it can be used towards infrastructure, schools and other public services through economic development agreements and other approaches. Then addition, we're going to be planning and maintaining local native grasses as well as pollinator friendly seed mixes. And so that will increase the soil health and biodiversity of the area for the duration of the project. So it's kind of priming that soil to be used for future agricultural uses after the lifetime of the solar farm is over. And then last but not least, solar facilities, they don't produce any odors. They don't produce any toxic chemicals. They don't use any public services like water, schools, et cetera, or other infrastructure. And it's just a way to harvest energy that is complementary to traditional agriculture. Lastly, I want to let you guys know, so we are developing our design and our project in compliance with the La Porte Solar Ordinance, which has a lot of safeguards in place, including road use agreement, decommissioning plan and bonds to put money aside to make sure that we're doing this properly, developing, maintaining the solar project. And we're going above and beyond those standards. So we're doing 250 foot minimum setbacks from residential homes and minimum 100 foot setbacks from non-participating property, as well as we're going to be planting vegetative screening, trees and bushes for folks who live nearby and don't want to look at the solar panels. We are open to working with you all. And so that goes above and beyond what's required by La Porte because like I said, we're going to be long-term neighbors. So we want to develop solar in a way that's complementary with agricultural land in the area. So I brought an example, solar panel. They're typically three and a half by seven and a half feet long and wide. So this is just a small scale version of that. And I'll turn it over if you guys have any questions. We're all ears.
Good afternoon. Steve Hollifield, 6782 East 100 South. I've got a few questions concerning just the impact on the neighbors. Excuse you for a second here. What, what could be expected for decrease in property values surrounding this? Because we've got studies that show anywhere from one and a half to eight percent loss.
Thank you so much for your questions, Steve. So we've got a property value expert, Marus and Company on this project assessing La Porte County specifically. There've been a number of studies conducted in Indiana and across the Midwest and the U.S. that show that there's no significant evidence of property value decrease, either from agricultural sales or residential home sales, if there are setbacks of at least 165 feet. And we're doing 250 foot setbacks as well as screening and other measures.
And you guys paid them for that study.
So we have engaged Marus and Company. But this, the studies that Marus has looked at, we did not pay for. Those were conducted by third parties.
I noticed one study that I ever looked at from Admison and Kewalki in 2020. The best places to put these are Australia, Brazil, Mexico, Saudi and South Africa, not in America. Why all of a sudden is a German company so interested in here?
So RWE Clean Energy, that's the company that we're a part of. That's the U.S. branch of RWE. We're made up of 1,500 employees and we're really focused on building up energy in the U.S. specifically. So I did take a look at the national radiation data on solar energy. In Indiana, it is 92% as sunny as Orlando, Florida, 87% as sunny as... I don't know. Yesterday was snow and I didn't think it. But in terms of the kilowatt hours per meter squared per day of solar electricity that can be produced here, it's actually quite comparable to Orlando, Florida, Dallas, Texas. We're actually 16% sunnier than Chicago here. And so solar is, and I'm happy to share this data with you. It's surprising as well. Something else that we take into account, so our solar panels are bifacial, meaning that they've got silicon on both sides. And so on days when it's sunny, the bottom of the panel can capture electricity as well. All that to say, there are certainly places that are sunnier that produce more kilowatt hours per area of electricity. But we need electricity everywhere. And this is the cheapest form of electricity in the U.S. and can add to our energy mix.
These are tied together. Will you receive any subsidies from USDA or federal government or tax credits? And then are you going to be asking the county for a tax abatement?
So we are not receiving any incentives from the state of Indiana federally. We do, through the Inflation Reduction Act, we get a 30% tax credit. But we did look, so all forms of energy receive incentives from, from the federal government. Just last year in 2022, traditional coal, oil and gas received 757 billion dollars of incentives, as opposed to renewables received 16 billion dollars of incentives. So across the board, energy in general receives incentives and we will be pursuing that from the federal government. In terms of the county, so we have started conversations with the economic development team. And the real reason behind that, it's kind of a win-win. So the way that Indiana budgets work, you can only increase it about four percent each year. And so that 50 to 100 million dollars of new tax benefit that our project is going to produce can't fully be captured unless we do an economic development agreement where those dollars could go directly towards schools or roads. So it's not, nothing is a done deal, but we're exploring that because the county could benefit more.
How are you going to decommission this land? I mean, I've seen a couple of studies that you only go so, I think the state ordinance says you only have to go three foot deep. If you put something deeper than it's, the hell with it. As a farmer and someone who's no-till most of his life, I find it very, very hard to believe that you're going to compact this soil for 35 years, control weeds around these things, and it's going to come right back into farming for our food production. Because that's a concern I have for the future is food production.
Yeah. So a number of questions within your question. So one in terms of decommissioning, we'll have a decommissioning plan with the county. The commissioners will actually review themselves. And that includes kind of how we're going to take down all of equipment, restore the land back to existing conditions. And that's all required by the La Porte Solar Ordinance. In addition to that decommissioning plan, we have to put in place a decommissioning bond. So a third-party qualified professional engineer will have to estimate, what's the cost of pulling up all of this equipment up to four feet deep? And our cabling by National Electric Safety Code has to be three and a half feet deep. So that'll cover that equipment. And that bond we put in place with the county for the total cost of tearing up that equipment. And that's as a safeguard to La Porte County citizens and to those landowners because this all comes back to personal property rights.
Couple more quick ones real quick. This bond you're going to put in.
Yes.
By state statute, it's supposed to look at every five, 10 and 15.
Yes.
Well, this is a 35-year project. What if you guys, you guys won't be here, I won't be here, the commissioners won't be allowed, elected won't be here, most of the people in the room probably won't be here.
Right.
What's the guarantee that you're going to have enough money to take or you could file bankruptcy? Over 700 companies in solar production in the U.S. have filed bankruptcies since 2011. So what's the guarantee that you can take care of this?
So this is something we take very seriously. RWE has been around for 125 years. We're a large company, but we do still put these bonds in place because we want to safeguard all of the areas where we are developing our solar projects. For our traditional solar projects, we do revisit that figure every five years. And we can, can do, we can do that with La Porte County if you all prefer.
Okay.
And I do want to go back, Steve. So your question about food production, that is important. Something I wanted to point out, so 45% of corn in Indiana that's produced goes towards ethanol. And so food security is important, but we also are looking at the future of energy, especially as we shift from to more energy efficient vehicles as well as electric vehicles. It's just one way, we're currently taking energy from the sun through photosynthesis, producing corn to then go into ethanol, taking that electricity from the sun and using semi-conduction to produce electricity to power other entities. That's just one other way to make use of that land.
Electric cars won't use ethanol, but that's a topic for another day. How many full-time jobs is it going to create in our area? I mean, full, actual full-time jobs, their job is to take care of that solar farm. I hate to use the word farm because it's actually not a farm.
So we can call it a solar facility as you wish. So this will create at least four full-time operations jobs. And our system is manned during the week by, by that team of operations and maintenance experts. It's also monitored 24/7 remotely through our center in Austin, Texas. So if anything were to come up, we'd notify the folks on the ground here with that team. In addition, we've been coordinating with all three fire departments in the area, Kankakee, Wells, or excuse me, Kankakee Pleasant and Lincoln. And we're putting on a fire safety training with our consultant, ESRG with them in a couple of weeks.
Okay, because you're, I'm township board president out there at Lincoln. So I'd like to know that because we've heard nothing yet.
Okay.
Just real quick things here and then I'll wrap it up for somebody else. What are you going to spray for weed control?
So as part of the solar ordinance in La Porte, we can't use any herbicide for spraying on our native grass mix. And I'll turn it over, Mark, if you want to provide any additional context there on maintaining that vegetative mix.
So we will abide by anything required by the county and the HJ. For the most part, we're going to do with whatever we communicate with you guys. As to the exact, right now, we're still communication with external parties to make sure that we're doing what the locality requires. So I'd love to give you details, but we don't have it. We're too, we're not far along to be able to answer the question. So apologies to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike McDitch, Jr., 2828 North 500 East. Steve touched on, you know, there's been 700 solar companies since 2011 that have gone bankrupt. Per the information I've researched, RWE filed the largest bankruptcy in 2016 of upwards of $49 billion, the largest business bankruptcy in Germany. Would you like to elaborate on the business side of this?
I don't know about that. Do you know about that, Mark or Hanaya? I appreciate you bringing that up. I'm going to take that back to the team, but we haven't heard about that from the RWE Clean Energy side. Thank you.
Your name's Seth, right?
Yes, yeah. I just want to assure you also, I mean, we're, we're a big company. This is upwards of $700 million investment in La Porte County. And so we, we take this seriously. And like I said, we've got bonds in place that are backed, but we'll take another look into this.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just looking out for the better of La Porte financially in the future. You know, who we're doing business with. And that was the first thing I acquired when I started searching. So if at later day you could elaborate on that. Another question I had, what noise do they produce? As I've looked, as far as effects on infants, wildlife, livestock in the vicinity, would you mind elaborating? I guess your take on that?
Definitely. So the noisiest part of a solar panel is actually the inverters that they connect to. So the solar panels like this, let me hold this up so you guys can see this. This is silicon, glass and aluminum. So there are no PFAS or Gen X chemicals in these materials. And then these stand on galvanized steel piles. And in terms of the noise, so these connect to what's called inverters. There are less of those around the entire solar facility. And at the setbacks that we are putting in place of a minimum of 100 feet, you won't be able to hear anything audible from these systems, from the inverters. When you are 30 feet away from the inverters, it's at 40 decibels. And that's the equivalent of a refrigerator humming. Three feet away from inverters, it is at 60 decibels. That's the equivalent of an air conditioning system or an electric toothbrush. So we are putting safeguards in place through those setbacks and vegetative screening so that there won't be noise in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your last name again?
It's McDuff, M C D W.
It's for the media.
Bob Rodinsky, 3652. I'm one of the solar people that's writing out. Versus these big mega dairy farms and stuff, the thousands of gallons of manure they put out a day, which is worse? Is it the dairy farms or would it be solar?
Thank you for your question, Bob. It comes back to property rights and that's why we have these ordinances in place. It's, it's up to your property rights as a landowner to decide how you use your land as long as it's within an acceptable use by La Porte County. So I won't comment on what's worse or better, but I will say we don't use any herbicides because of the La Porte County ordinance on our system. And we are, once they're installed, they don't use any public services. There's no chemicals or anything going into the groundwater. So it is, it's a great way to use that agricultural land.
Well, I know, I grew up on a farm and I milked cows and all that stuff. And I know what's pumped out of them places. And you know, it's kind of like the rebuilding of the soil. I know many years ago, I could look out and see lightning bugs covering a whole field. Now I don't hardly see any. Butterflies gone. Okay, ain't no butterflies no more. Reason is, is called the herbicides that the farmers are putting on there. But the thing is, it's a necessary evil. You have to do it. And it's just like these mega farms, dairy farms, they're spooling that stuff. All of it ain't going in the soil. I mean, it's going in the streams and all that, but it's a necessary evil. We got to eat.
Yeah.
You know? So it's the same thing with the solar. If you want to have rolling blackouts and stuff like that, like I and M was maybe calling for last year, turn it down, you know? But then you can explain that to the people when they're out of electric. Don't build infrastructure, we're done.
Thanks, Bob.
Jeff Downs, 24 North 250 East. How are you guys going to get the electricity from the solar farm to where it's going? How many properties are going to be affected by that, if any?
So all of the parcels that are participating in the project currently, the transmission lines, so the big overhead electric lines run through those properties. And so we're just going to connect on the land that's already participating in the project.
So there'll be no other lines run underground or above head?
It's all within participating landowners on the project.
Okay.
My name's Larry Cadwell. My wife and I own farm property in Kankakee Township. We own farm property in Galena Township and I'm a retired farmer. I'm interested in the economic impact of the project and particularly the tax aspects of it. And Mike, I did look online. I found a Purdue University Extension publication dated just a year ago. And in summary, in a simple sentence, it said, some people prefer fields of corn to fields of solar panels. Others, availability of solar power may be attractive. But there's no doubt that solar development will add to the local government revenues and reduce local tax bills. Regarding that, my questions maybe for the assessor's office. Is it conceivable that this project will substantially reduce the tax bills in local taxes, Kankakee Township, county taxes? Is that actually really likely to happen in a substantial way? And secondly, who specifically might benefit if it is true? Will it be business owners? Will it be farmers, residential residents, city residents? And I also noted that in part of, one of the publications, that there's a cap on the amount of tax that the county can collect from the state. And depending on how close we are to that tax, if any of that money, if we're at the taxed limit, then any additional tax, according to this source, could not go, it would, it would require that that tax be returned to the people in terms of lower taxes to us as individuals, as landowners, business owners and that sort of thing. So where is La Porte County relative to the ceiling of tax? And will we then therefore likely to see that money returned to us? Or are we below that ceiling that the state requires? And that that money could be used for infrastructure, for education and for other beneficial uses?
Do you want to answer that or do you want me to try first?
I think I can talk to the assessor.
Thank you. I'm a county assessor. Mr. Stables, the honor handles the tax side of it, but we handle the assessment side of it. From what I see for those three townships, because the land value will increase, so there's a likelihood that as long as the tax rate stays under the 2%, the farm ground would see the benefit because we're already over the 1% out there. But the farm ground, if it's not going to be at 2%, it will come under the 2% because of the new assessment on that land. So their, their taxes could see a reduction. The overall project is basically a personal property. They will send what they feel is the, the value of the, the actual structures, which are personal property utility in the state of Indiana. They will send that downstate. I don't get to see that. But that will benefit the whole county as a whole because it goes into the total pot. But those townships will see their share of it as well. As far as any like taxes returned, you're not going to see any tax return like dollar wise. All you're going to see is reduction in assessments or rates for everyone and especially the farm ground in those three townships.
Larry, does that answer your question?
Yes.
You're not going to get like a refund or there not going to be anything like that?
That wasn't my question. I didn't mean.
You should see a, you should see a reduction in those tax rates in those three townships. And as a whole for the county, you could see it, it come down as well. But for your township rate out there, you should see a pretty good size reduction. But like I said, this isn't real property. The only thing I'm going to be assessing is the land, the fences, any structure that isn't used for the production of electricity. So it's kind of like the Nipco Station in Michigan City on the lake. I assess very little of that. I assess the fence, a guard shack, a shop room, the land. But the land isn't at highest and best use. But out here, it won't be highest and best use, but it's going to, the state tells us what we can set it at. Because they have these zones throughout the state regions, they call them. But they, you should see a reduction in the assessment on farm ground because it's going to bring that under 2% if it gets near that. So the farmer should see some reduction in their taxes on farm ground.
And I'll add to what Mike said. So one additional benefit or one additional approach to, to get those new tax dollars, like you were saying, is if we did an economic development agreement with the county council and some of those dollars could go directly towards schools, towards infrastructure. So that's in addition to lowering tax rates, right?
Chad Beatles, I live at 3052 North 450 East in Kankakee Township. And I'm also a part owner of property at the corner of 100 South and Taylor Road in Lincoln Township. So this comes from the Department of Justice dated on Monday, November 14th, 2022. Four major solar construction companies. AL Solar, which was near American Falls, Idaho, Perry County, and also in Perry County, Illinois. And then Big River Solar LLC in the states of Alabama and Illinois. They had a $1.3 million settlement with the Department of Justice and the EPA on, I'm going to get this, let me get this correct. Construction permit violations and stormwater mismanagement. So I know where part, you know, we all know where part of this, of these proposed fields are going to be located. And there are some major drainage ditches and water sources in that vicinity. How can we be assured that what's happened here is not gonna happen in Lepore County?
To answer your first question, we won't be hiring the companies that you just mentioned. But to your point, the state of Indiana requires the NPDS permit that is across nationwide, all fifty states. To fifteen-five, I think they've renamed it since I've personally did one of the permits. We take it seriously. We take it, we go through with a fine tooth comb. We vet all of our engineering companies, all of our construction companies, and we have selected a very small amount that perform nationwide. And we go through their safety record, their environment record, and their financial record to know that they can operate in the way that we need them to. As mentioned by Emily earlier, because we are nationwide, we have to be able to provide for all of the communities we work in. So to your point, it's literally what I do every day, is to talk to these individuals as the engineer, as a construction company, as a health and safety expert, and make sure that they're in compliance, that they know what the rules are, that we know what the rules are, while also hiring independent contractors to make sure that they go out to the site frequently to ensure that we are in compliance with both their plan, that they submit to us months in advance, that we vet at various opportunities, as well as making sure that we are in compliance with the latest regulations from the county, the city, the state, and the federal government. So to your point, I could show you the fifty emails I got today from all of the companies that, not that you've mentioned, but they're required to do what you're saying. In addition, as becoming more prevalent across the United States is, we have to put our name on those permits. So we would be fined as well. So I don't wanna report to bosses in Austin to say, yes, we also got a two hundred fifty thousand dollar fine. Thank you for doing your job today, Mark. Well, the construction company would probably have to pay a bigger fine, but it's is a constant, constant battle that we face internally to make sure that we are following multiple steps in every part of the development, construction, and post-construction process. Part of that is communicating with you and hearing these things right now to make sure, is there a drain tile? Is a drain tile connected to a larger system? Is the surface flow going to be changed in any way, shape, or form? It should not be. We need to vet that, both talking to you and talking to our engineers and construction companies. I don't think I've answered completely, but if there are other questions, please let me know in response to that.
Well, also, how can we be assured that the transparency between your company and the residents of these townships are gonna be, I mean, is there is there any transparency? Is there gonna be any transparency to the residents?
Yeah, so to answer your question, we've conducted a number of environmental and engineering surveys. So we've done a wetland delineation. Our our partner, TRC, one of our vetted environmental engineer consultants. They've done hydrological studies. We just completed a drain and irrigation survey, so we know where drain. There's actually no drain tile on on the project site, which is pretty surprising, but there are some irrigation lines. And so all of that is incorporated into the preliminary design, and we wanted to include that. It's not required per se by Lepore ordinance to have that level of detail in our design, but we wanted to include that so it's made public as part of our permitting process that will take place later this year.
I would add, I heard some murmurs. You guys know the biggest issue with drain tiles, that it was installed a long time ago, and it might not have been mapped correctly. If you have that information for any property in the county, please let us know so that we can make sure what you're saying is being taken into account with the design.
And then my final question. This is in regards, it might not be your 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 project, I'm not a hundred percent sure. The solar farms in Saint Joseph County. The absolute mess along the sides of the road, the thousands upon thousands of broken panels that are just stacked on the side of the road, and the trash. I'm I'm just trying, I'm just trying to figure out if if our townships are gonna have this exact same fate that Saint Joe County is having right now with with those farms or with those fields.
I can't speak to our development competitor of that, but I will say, should something like that occur, I will be on the first plane to Austin, Texas, having to answer why my construction manager is getting complaints from the local local neighbors as to, why is there trash on this project site? You are a community member. Make sure that we treat it as such.
And I'll just add, so a number of our experts are based out of Austin, Texas. We all work out of the Chicago, Illinois office, so we're close by. I am an hour and a half drive away, so yeah, we would take care of that.
So, I mean, in in closing, you know, just be just just be aware that there are several, there'll be several watchdogs if this program actually goes forward to hold you, your company accountable for any issues.
And we appreciate that. So part of why we started community engagement early on was to let all the neighbors know, hey, we're developing this project and we want to hear from you. So we encourage, please reach out. And to plug that, so there's a website now, bluestemsolar.rwe.com. And there is an email address and form there. Please reach out if you have any questions, and especially as as the project progresses.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Angela Bellis, and I'm at sixty-five sixty-two East, three hundred North, Rolling Prairie. My question is, I don't know, about three years ago, I got a contract from an attorney to put a pole at the end of my driveway. Well, they ended up deciding not to do that. And so this energy source that you're saying it's gonna adapt into is those poles that they ran through all the fields, correct?
So I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about. Could you elaborate?
The ener- the energy source company hired an attorney and went to certain neighbors and wanted to run electrical lines as a power source, as you're saying your solar is gonna connect to. So you're part of that that was going on three years ago?
No, so this is separate. So our project will interconnect with large transmission lines. There is a one hundred thirty-eight kilovolt, that's a NipSCO line that runs north to south. And then there's a three hundred and forty-five kilovolt AEP line that runs northeast to southwest. And so those are existing lines that our project will interconnect with if if we get a permit and are approved to do the project.
But you're not connected to the people that put that put those new poles in
No.
across the whole county?
That's a separate program.
But you're gonna adapt into them.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Yes, so the utility NipSCO put those poles up in anticipation of expansion of energy source for the entire area. So I don't know if we were in that planning process, but to your question about utilizing what they did, we would be utilizing that. We would be plugging into that source.
Okay. And so how many acres are we talking that you're gonna take our food that goes into our stores that supplies our families for solar?
So the project that we're planning will be on no more than twenty-six hundred acres. That's what we're estimating with the preliminary design. That's one percent of the agricultural land in Lepore County. And we also care about food safety. We care about energy, domestic security as well. And so this is gonna be a small percentage of total agricultural land in the county. And as I mentioned earlier, a lot of our agriculture, it's more efficient. You can produce more corn and soybean per acre than you could ten years ago, and anticipate that continuing. And this is, this is, we recognize it's a large project, but in the grand scope of agricultural land in Lepore County, it's one percent.
Okay, so what are your estimates of our food prices going up?
That I can't speak to. I don't know, Hanai or Mark, if you wanna speak to that question.
Yeah, I think that's a valid question. As far as, you know, having set statistics or numbers on the ag land that the private landowners that choose to participate are no longer producing crops on, versus how that's gonna directly impact local economy, so your local food. I don't, I'm not aware of any studies that directly link the two. But something that we do know, and that there is data on the Indiana statistical website, that demonstrates that agriculture makes up in the ballpark of between like
Prices are crazy as it is.
They are crazy.
If you take that much crop away from a small community, then that's gonna impact, period. Also, a lot of us have children. So the solar farms, are are they gonna be safe if a child gets near one? Is there cancer risk near these? That, you know, I think I speak for a lot of us, is we move to the country for a reason. We live in cornfields for a reason, to protect our youngins. And so you're like talking like hotels and all this, so you you Chicagoans can come to the country and explore. That's not what, we don't want that. We don't want hotels. We don't want condominiums. There's a reason why they're all here. So as in, as an overall, I don't see that this is justice for anything that we want as a community.
These are all great points and questions. I wanna speak to each individually. So one, I wanna speak to the fact that twenty percent of the corn that we produce in this country is exported. A lot of corn that we produce is wasted, and then forty-five percent of corn in Indiana goes towards ethanol. So it's not all towards food production, but I recognize your point. I also wanna speak to the the solar panels that we would be putting in as part of this project. There are no toxic, cancerous chemicals as part of this. It's silicon, glass, and aluminum, and then on galvanized steel piles, which are the foundations. And we we chose these panels for a reason. There are other types of solar panels out there that don't use as safe or as readily abundant materials that are kind of commonplace. And silicon, you can look at it, it's a semiconductive material, so that's what takes the photons from the sun and converts it into electricity, kind of like taking sunlight and using photosynthesis to turn into food for crops. To speak to your your point about safety of of your kids, I I understand that these are families that have lived in Lepore for generations, and they've decided that they wanna farm the land for solar electricity as opposed to traditional farming. And so it comes back to to personal property and and a complimentary use of the land with agriculture. This will save the land as an agricultural zone, and so apartment complexes can't be built there. Condominiums can't go in there. And so it keeps that land within those families for future agricultural use if they decide to use it that way, or or continued electricity production.
Okay, but you still didn't answer the question, is it safe if a child gets near them? If a child, they explore. And, you know, we've had watering systems hurt children because they explore. You didn't say if they got connected to one, if it could hurt them? And what's your plan to to keep that from happening?
Thank you for your question. So we'll have a fence around the entire project area, and it'll be a woven wire game-friendly fence, so the animals can get in and out, but humans don't go in and out of that site. Around any high voltage electric equipment, we'll have chain leak fence as well as barbed wire on top. We do not want any humans, in particular any children, going into those facilities, because it is dangerous. It's like going into the electrical cabinet in your home or in this building. And then in addition, like I mentioned earlier, back to noise, or excuse me, I guess I haven't mentioned this, so electric magnetic frequency comes up as a question. Basically, when electric machines work, they have to have a magnetic field to operate. The highest electromagnetic frequency equipment that would be affiliated with this project are the transmission lines that are already running through that land. And if you are right up underneath those transmission lines, the amount of electromagnetic radiation is the same as a ceiling fan, a microwave. And so if you're standing up next to a microwave for prolonged periods, it's not good for your health. You could have fatigue, dizziness, decreased cognitive abilities. But like a microwave, if you if you stand back a little bit and you're not playing underneath the the transmission lines every day, there are no significant impacts to health.
But the solars don't give off no rays?
No, so the solar panels, it's non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation, meaning no impact to to human health, or no found impact to to human health that's been studied for the past forty, fifty years. And in terms of glare, so we get asked this question frequently, these are designed to withstand hail, tornadoes, that are designed to last for a long time. And they're also designed to absorb as much solar electricity as possible. So only two percent of the light that hits solar panels is reflected off. We're trying to capture as much as possible. And actually, over twenty percent of airports in the US have solar panels around the vicinity. So there's there's not enough glare to impact even planes that are flying by them.
Okay, so is, if you're in that facility, are the, it's gonna lower our electric bills?
So that you'd have to ask NipSCO about, but it is the lowest, the the most cost-effective form of electricity production across.
Somebody's getting paid, but it may not be us.
So that's it, that's a tough question, and and we'd have to talk to NipSCO about electricity rates.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Willie Allison. Willie Allison, five seven nine one, East State Road, one oh four. I got a recording out of a solar field up in Michigan. You guys say it doesn't emit any really loud noise? See if I can find it again. Probably can't, because it's really loud and annoying.
While he's looking through that, I know the clip he's referencing, you may have heard it online as well. There's several of them out there. Can you explain the differences, not just the setbacks, but the sound differences? And if there's any difference between the age of the facilities and stuff like that that may go to why in some areas, when you're right, when you're not necessarily right up on the fence line, but when you're at the edge of the road, you can hear them versus other setups where you can't?
That's a great question, Joe. So as with any technology, I mean, it improves every year. Solar electricity panels, they've reduced in cost fifty percent over the last ten years. And there've been a lot of technological improvements to those, including reducing sound, making them more efficient, kind of like seed mixes today, you can get more product out of an acre. Oh, here we go. Go, go ahead.
Who's gonna wanna listen to the app all day, every day? Because we got approached by Mammoth and another one, because they're wanting to tie into where you guys are at. And he gave me some good information. I can't give which company it was, because he'll lose his job. And he gave me another website with a competitor of your guys' and theirs out of Canada. And they use thermal and provo- the photo, well PV.
PV, yeah, you get it.
And they have a whole list of chemicals that are in these things. What's the difference between their panels of PV and thermal and your guys'?
So I can't, again, I can't speak to what our competitors are doing. I'm not sure which company this is. I would love to take a look at that recording, see where that was recorded from, again, how old the technology is. Like I said, there are improvements year over year to make these as as least impact on neighbors, as well as the landowners. And I quoted those those stats a little bit earlier about noisiness of the inverters. It's the most noisy part of a solar facility. I'm happy to to talk about those again if you didn't catch any of that.
Lennon, Michigan is where it's at.
Okay.
It's the DCAC converters.
I will certainly look into that, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
And the other thing is, you said solar is cheaper than nuclear, and the guy I talked to, and this Canadian firm, they both claim nuclear is, it says solar is much more expensive than nuclear. How how is that different from your guys' solar stuff?
So this may be looking at the lifetime versus the the cost to construct, nuclear versus solar. So over the lifetime of solar, it doesn't take any fuel to power solar electricity. It's free from the sun. So you've just gotta put it in there and make sure that it operates um as it should for the full thirty-five years. Whereas nuclear, um, it takes your radioactive chemicals, it takes a lot of experts to maintain heavy equipment. Um, so that probably was what was included in that calculation.
How much direct in, direct sunlight does it take for the panels to create, could or create electric?
That's a great question. So actually, solar panels can capture direct sunlight as well as diffuse sunlight, meaning sunlight that comes through clouds um and and partly cloudy or fully cloudy conditions. So in partly cloudy conditions, solar panels are fifty to eighty percent as effective as they would be in direct sunlight. Um, and then heavily cloudy conditions, they're up to twenty-five percent as efficient. So they can still capture quite a lot of sunlight, even when it's cloudy. And those figures, we were laughing about Orlando and Dallas, Texas, but in Indiana, you still can capture a lot of sunlight in La Porte. So those figures included cloudy days, overcast days, what have you.
And there was a report done all through January, up just not too far from South Bend. They recorded there is only twenty-eight day, or twenty hours of sunlight all of January. How, how is these solar, any solar panels gonna be efficient when there's only twenty-eight hours sunlight all of January?
So again, it can capture uh during cloudy conditions as well as fully sunny conditions. Um, and over the course of, course of the entire year, La Porte, Indiana captures as um ninety-two percent um of the electricity that you could in Orlando, Florida. Eighty-seven percent of the electricity that you could capture in Dallas, Texas. So it is quite, it's quite a lot of sunlight that you can capture using this technology. Thanks for your questions.
Really quick, if anyone is on Zoom, raise your hand so that we can have you um ask questions as well.
He said this is one of their earliest years.
We have one hand up. Hello, you're on.
My name is Randall Beach, four one seven seven West Schultz Road. I have a couple of questions. One of them is on the uh infrastructure. You you talked about galvanized pile drivings. Uh, how are those gonna react against the soil once they're drove into the?
So, just like any foundation, a vibratory hammer will just punch it into the ground. And using the skin friction from the existing soil, it will hold it in place. So much like a lean-to, foundation for a garage, anything of that nature. The panels weigh very little, the system weighs weighs very little, so there's not a lot of load that goes on to these, to the foundations.
But but you missed the question. The question is, how is that metal gonna react to the soils? Because thirty-five years down the road, this uh metal is gonna be rusted into the ground, and you're gonna turn it right back into a farm.
So galvanized steel is selected because it's not corrosive over that time, and we we put it in place so that um, it's it's protected and maintained during that period. It would not behoove us to have systems that are corroding or rusting over time, just like it would, it wouldn't behoove landowners in La Porte County.
Yeah, galvanized steel is a corrosive uh metal. Um, you keep uh uh talking about this as being a farm. A farm, for all all intents and purposes, a solar farm is an industrial, it's it's an industrial enterprise, period. It's not a farm. You're not gonna, you're not gonna be su- supportive of any type of farm uh growth, any forestry use. It doesn't enhance it at all. Why do you keep refer- referring to it as a farm instead of what it is, an industrial complex?
So again, we we can call it whatever, whatever would make uh La Porte County as a community happy. We we can certainly change the name. Uh, but we are calling it a farm because it's a complementary use to agricultural land. Um, and so rather than farming corn and bean, we are farming electricity with our solar panels.
And could you look more into the uh the uh galvanized steel pile drivings, what gauge they would be? Because uh I work in the steel industry. In my experience, if I have a twelve-gauge infrastructure and I bury it in the ground for thirty-five years, it's gonna be rusted. It's gonna be that what rusted metal down there when you go pull it out.
So we would be using at minimum W six five nine steel beams that would be driven by vibratory hammer, which would include three mills of sacrificial galvinization on top of that. The exact mixture of what it would be, whether it would be zinc or other things, is unknown at this time as we wait for the results of the soil testing.
Okay, i- is that a requirement that uh the county is in their solar?
That is required from RWE to meet the minimum standards for forty years of life cycle. Should the the geotechnical engineer come back with more, as well as the corrosion engineer who we require to be NACE certified, to say, hey, it needs to be five mil, we would have to abide by that. The.
Minimum standard set by who?
And that's our standard as a company. I'll speak to the the solar La Porte ordinance. So the ordinance requires that we return the land to existing condition. And so we do have to make sure that we're not impacting soil quality during the lifetime of the project. Uh, but it does not include any specifics about uh materials used, galvanized steel, et cetera. But that's kind of the the standards of our company.
Thank you for that. And uh on earlier, you said on the property uh home property value reductions that uh you had this um, uh, y- you paid for this bu- to be done by a third party. Is this third party a certified for studies on this, or is it just a third party that was available that would do this research for you?
So two separate things. So the studies that I was quoting, where there wasn't evidence of reduction in property value, when you have setbacks of at least a hundred and sixty-five feet, those are studies done by other entities. We we did not pay those companies. Um, these are just studies that are publicly available. Um, the company that we're working with, Marus and Company, they're local to the Midwest. Um, we are paying them because we want them to look at property values specifically in La Porte County. And make sure that our project won't impact property values here.
And copies of those reports are available to the public?
We can certainly find those for you. Um, but yes, they're they're publicly available. And and I'll say as well, so all of these pieces that we're looking into, our preliminary design, the decommissioning plan, all of those pieces are gonna be made publicly available at the time of our permit application, um, when we're going through the public county permitting process. Um, so it's it's a very transparent process, and it's in place to to safeguard citizens and landowners um as we go through this process.
We have.
Thank you for your time.
We have about twenty more minutes. Um, so for those who have not came up. You wanna ask a question real quick, and then we'll we'll craft the other one.
Larry Cadwell again. Um, I'd like to blow the horn a little bit for our uh county commission. I was doing a little bit of online searching and didn't realize that the county had passed in uh, on the sixth day of October in twenty twenty-one, a La Porte uh ordinance amending and supplementing La Porte County sort, uh county zoning ordinance, land usage as amended to adopt section fourteen point fifteen, solar energy systems. It's only a five or six-page document, and it outlines all of the requirements that the county has to put on whoever it is that comes in. And if any of you haven't seen it, I would highly recommend. It's a short read. It's pretty inclusive. I think it was pretty well done. And that uh, uh, as a result of reading that, oh, and by the way, it it is, again, a La Porte County Commissioner's Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. So if you haven't seen it, good read, you might wanna look it up. Uh, but that raised a couple of questions in my mind with regard to RWE. Uh, and I think you probably answered part of this, but I wanna make sure, is RWE fully aware of all the La Porte County Commissioner's ordinances uh requirements, first of all? And has RWE included all requirements in the ordinance in the planning and future operation of the Kankakee Township Solar Farm? And lastly, does RWE plan to seek any exemptions to ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen?
These are excellent questions. We have read in depth. I have read this ordinance so many times, I could probably recite it to you. So we are incorporating that into our design and into the entire application process as well as once we move into the construction and operations phase. It's not just something that we have to meet to get a permit. It's something that we've gotta meet for the entire lifetime of the project. Um, and it's not just the solar ordinance, we'll also meet the general zoning ordinances of the county. Um, so that includes wetlands, waterways, um agricultural requirements. And we're not just meeting, but we're exceeding those requirements. So one example of that is the two hundred and fifty-foot setbacks for many residential homes. We wanna go above and beyond um adding bed sheet screening um to make sure that um, we're not just meeting requirements, but we're exceeding them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can have the person on Zoom.
Are you waiting for me?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Power, I'm at forty fifteen North US thirty-five, and I got a couple of questions. Will there be any batty, battery backup installed at this location? And where are the solar panels made?
So two questions. One, to your question about battery storage. Um, so we are planning a electrically separate, but connected in terms of land, battery storage system. Um, it's a hundred megawatts. And that process, we're coordinating with the county, but there's also um a state legislation that's in place as of last year, HB eleven seventy-three. Um, and your local representative, Jim Pressel, actually introduced that to the state of Indiana. He knows a lot about battery storage um and crafted that so that the Department of Homeland Security reviews any battery storage systems that are proposed in the state of Indiana for construction. Um, so there are a whole list of requirements there that that we'll have to meet. Uh, but we are looking into a battery storage system that, again, would be in the project facility. The solar panels wouldn't be directly connected to the battery system, uh but both would be connected to the electrical grid that runs through that area. Um, and your second question, could you remind me, sir?
What are the solar panels made?
So our solar panels are ma- manufactured um by JA Solar. They're a Vietnamese company. And I'll let Mark speak more about the specifics there.
So to your question, you know, as a, an entity in the United States, we have to abide by all all rules and laws. Clearly, a lot of panels have been held by the federal government as we try to get away from Chinese manufacturers. To that point, RWE is going above and beyond to ensure that we are in compliance, both with the federal government, but also with our own internal standards, where we have an independent QA QC individual go to the manufacturing facility. That means anywhere in the world, so for this would be in Vietnam, and go view that line and see where is, where's the materials coming from, what are the conditions that this is being manufactured, and what is the quality of that? So we receive those, once manufacturing starts, that individual goes there, spends about three weeks, maybe a little bit longer, depending on how long it takes to manufacture that. And we get daily reports that we are required to review and comment on, so that we can provide information back to that manufacturer in real time to either stop production and address issues, be them any of the information I just mentioned. Or, and wait for them, if we have an issue, wait for them to provide a, some kind of remedial action so we can move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your question.
Jeremy Sebicki, one five four Garden Street, La Porte. I just, quick question in regards to what happens to all of it after thirty-five years. Is any of this stuff recyclable? Is it, you know, or is it just thrown away? Thank you.
Thank you. So like I mentioned earlier, we've got a decommissioning plan that we'll have in place for the county um for how we'll remove this equipment. We'll have a decommissioning bond in place for the full cost of removing that equipment that'll be assessed every five years, like Steve was mentioning. Uh, but at the end of that lifetime, a lot of that equipment can be recycled and repurposed for other electronics. Um, for fiberglass, you can take a lot of that glass. If you can't recycle it for solar panels, you can recycle it for insulation for your home. Um, and so we always look to recycle where possible for this equipment.
Sarah Worthington, nine nine five.
I have a question.
Hold on one second, please.
Um, I am a property owner at fifty-eight fifty-eight East, one fifty North. Our family farm has solar panels that are projected to be on three sides of my family's farm. My question is, you said that those are not breakable, the solar panels? And you said that they're made of aluminum, glass, and silicone. What is on the inside of them?
Yes, I'll, let me turn this around. So on the inside, um, it's just electrical wiring that takes the, basically, sunlight hits the silicone on this side, and it causes electricity through activity. And then these wires on the backside pull the electricity up to the power lines.
So you're saying there's no chemical toxins inside the solar panel?
No, sir, I mean, next time I should bring a deconstructive one, so you can see the different pieces, but it's silicone, glass, aluminum, and then electrical wiring um that runs it through the transmission lines.
And then, another question, what powers the inverters?
Hmm, so I believe the solar panels themselves power the inverters. I do know we are connected to the electrical line as well, so that those can power when solar, the sun is not shining.
Yes, to what you said.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say, oh, just one more comment. I mean, if anybody uh lives close to the solar farm or lives in the community and wants to learn more, please reach out. We'd love to hear from you and work with you as we're developing our design.
Let me take the one that's on the screen first. I'm not sure if those mean or not. If you could state your name and your address.
Uh, I wasn't aware of any battery storage. What type of storage structure are you gonna be putting in place for that battery storage, uh the battery casings? Are they gonna be self-extinguishing casings in case of a thermal runaway? Are you gonna put fire suppression in for thermal runaway? Is there gonna be a sump on the building to catch? What are you gonna do with the vapor that comes from the gases from the uh, if there is a thermal runaway? What codes are you gonna try to comply with for the thermal runaway?
These are great questions. So our solar, our, excuse me, our battery storage containers are battery energy storage systems, or BES. So BES, they are contained in essentially shipping containers. So think of a data center room, if you've ever gone into a data um IT room, where it's racks of batteries, um, kind of on a server rack. Those are within a battery container, so it's self-contained. Um, and then those different racks of battery cells and modules um have different water injection units that are connected to it, and air conditioning units to cool the system so that it doesn't overheat. And if something does happen, it's isolated um to the rack of battery cells and isolated to the container itself as well. Um, in addition to meeting an FPA, National Electric Code, and other safety codes specific to battery systems, um, La Porte County has reviewed battery storage systems in the past and has a number of recommendations beyond um what's in the solar ordinance that are specific to battery storage systems. Um, so we'll be putting in place a twenty-five thousand gallon water tank that'll help um, cool the system if a fire should occur, um and kind of isolate the system. You really just wanna let it burn out um, when it, when a battery fire does occur, similar to if a battery, um, if a phone battery were were to take to to catch fire. Um, so there are a lot of safeguards in place in terms of the codes and the way they're constructed now in containers. Um, and we're coordinating with uh the fire departments to to make sure they're trained up specifically on battery storage safety.
Uh, what went with the wastewater? And then you also just said something about you had let the fire burn out, so the casing itself is not a self-extinguishing, I take it? Uh, on the burnout, what type of fumes are gonna escape to into the environment? Uh, how will that affect the residents within that uh, uh, two hundred and fifty-foot setback you're talking about?
Can I just interrupt real quick? Mr. Beach, may this be your last question, because we have another person who has not had an opportunity.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, thank you.
So if you could just answer that, so we can get to the last two.
So there are systems to vent the gas, but contain it within the container. Um, and so it's not being released in into the environment, but there's an apparatus for cooling the system should a fire occur. Um, and then it's all contained within that container. Um, and so that that's kind of how we approach it uh with this containerized solution, so that um we don't run off or anything of that. so that we don't run off or anything of that matter. Those containers are put on concrete foundations too, so that it can't seep into the groundwater.
Okay, so we had the other person.
Hello, I'm Linda Bitterley, twenty-four ninety-seven East Division Road. I have a lot of questions, but I just, I want to, number one, know if there'll be more meetings like this so that we can, you know, have more time to, to prepare or be there. I would also like to know how, if this, if this comes about, how this is going to impact the traffic in this area, which is farm-related and farmers going down on tractors? And is it connected at all with the intermodal process? Those are, those are two questions.
So I answer the, the middle question, and then in terms of another session, we'd be happy to, to return. I'll leave that up to the commissioners to decide. In terms of the, we call it the haul route, where trucks would be coming in to bring equipment during the two to three years of construction. I've met with the highway department. I've also met with the head of Hazmat to talk through battery storage safety to that last question. But we put a road use agreement in place and a transportation plan so that trucks aren't willy-nilly deciding what road they want to take to make deliveries. We've got a plan in place. And any roads that are damaged, should they be damaged? It's our responsibility to pay for their repair. And we put a bond in place with the county for ten percent of the cost of replacing all roads that we would be using as part of that haul route. So we would coordinate very closely with the highway department on that. Okay.
My name's Jerome Husters, zero three zero seven South, four hundred East. You guys have any other places in Indiana that are set up already?
So we have one operational, it's a wind system in Tipton County, Indiana. And then we do have solar facilities in Illinois and other Midwest states. And we've got operational systems in forty-five U.S. states.
Okay. You talked about other companies, ABC, about their panels. And aren't you guys all underneath the same regulations of your panels not breaking? And so you would think there's a guideline for all the companies. So your panel is supreme versus the ones that break?
So from a material standpoint, kind of like if you're building your home, you can decide what type of siding, if you want cedar shingle or if you want wood.
But isn't there guidelines for tomato?
There are quality guidelines per manufacturer. Where we do have really strict standards are our electrical safety codes and building codes. So we have to meet building code standards for La Porte County as well as national codes when it comes to electrical safety.
The reason why I ask, the place where I live at, been there since ninety-six, and I've had four major storms that came through there, two minor tornadoes in straight lines, which took down two-to-three-foot diameter trees, irrigations, and other things. So my concern is if them panels fly up and cross in my ground, where I got cattle and property, of course, who's responsible for fixing that?
Well, we would be responsible for fixing it and paying for it. And I will say, these panels are designed in a way where they're very durable. They're low to the ground, so they're five to six feet off the ground. And kind of similar to a cornstalk in height, five to twelve feet. But so they're low to the ground, so they don't have a lot of wind load on them. And they're designed to be very durable in hailstorms, tornadoes. So it's rare for them to break. If they do break, they shear rather than shatter, so the glass is designed that way. And moreover, we'd be responsible for, for taking care of that. The operations team onsite would, would work with you. And then our twenty-four-seven monitoring system in Austin, Texas, if anything were to happen, would alert that team too, if it happened overnight.
One more question. Why did you pick good farm ground versus ground that could be used for nothing else? And why this area?
So we picked this area because of the transmission lines that are going through the project location. There are two transmission lines, so we can add electricity, kind of, in more than one way, to La Porte County and surrounding areas. We chose parcels that are contiguous, so they're next to each other, to be as efficient as possible, as tight as possible with the project site, where using bifacial panels and tracking systems, they track with the sun from east to west, so we can produce as much electricity as possible given that footprint. And moreover, these were landowners with their own personal property rights who decided to be a part of the project and keep this land within the family and provide stable income for their families and their kids and grandkids.
I know. Sounds like Nippsco and AEP determines where it goes, but I was told that most of it would be going out of state of electricity. So I'm thinking, oh, why couldn't you just do it in a different state where the nice deserts are and mountainsides where you have no other problems?
And I understand that some of you do not want it here, and some folks in the county do. So, so that's why we're here tonight, to hear you out and see what considerations we can fold into the design. Thank you.
Also, Jerome, I saw you had a packet of notes, and plenty of you other people I know probably have a ton of other questions that you weren't able to ask. But if you could just send us an email to bluestemsolar@rwe.com. This is kind of the beginning of us being here, getting to know you guys, hearing your questions and concerns. Community engagement and getting your feedback and perspectives is an integral part of our development process. So if you could just send us your questions, we can answer them for the folks on Zoom that didn't get to ask them, for others that didn't have time tonight. Reach out to us. We're available. We're around all the time. If you want to sit down and have a coffee and talk about these things, we're available to do that at any point. The email address is bluestem, that's B-L-U-E-S-T-E-M-solar@rwe.com.
And what we're going to do is, we're going to actually get their contact information and put it on our website. So then this would be the ability, if you don't have a pencil or pen here and you can't write it down, we'll make sure that we get it on our website, give you the ability to contact them. And then at a later date, if they decide to do some kind of another workshop, they want to facilitate it through us, or they want to facilitate it at one of your community buildings, then that would give you the opportunity to invite them to one of your community buildings and have them come out to your location and talk to you about that.
One quick thing if I could add. You guys are talking about tying into the solar, the power grid that's here. I've worked on the St. Joe Energy Facility in New Corral.
Can you come up to the mic? Because unfortunately, we can't hear you.
I'm Ron Albertson. I live at seven seven two three North Mulberry Lane. I don't live in the area where these are going, but I've got family that live there and I know the majority of these farmers. I worked on the power plant in New Corral. I was told when that went in, none of the power stays in the area. You're talking about tying into twenty-six thousand homes with this power grid. You're talking about tying into the transmission lines that are running through there. This power doesn't stay here. Where is it going?
So I have personally driven the lines, the one thirty-eight KV line that runs through there, it ties directly to the distribution lines in this area and right around the project site. And the three forty-five KV line supports the, the area, this area of Indiana.
So you're saying you're going to take care of twenty-six thousand houses around this area that's going to produce the solar?
It produces enough electricity to power twenty-six thousand homes. And it kind of goes back to my point earlier. A lot of traditional power plants are retiring, so we need to replace that electricity somehow.
When I go to a dual-fire facility like we're doing in New Corral, I just built one in Niles also with the same company that put the one in in New Corral.
We need all of the above.
So the other question I have too, say we get thirty inches of snow like we did back in January.
Yes.
How much power are you going to produce when you get thirty inches of snow sitting on your panel?
So this is a good question. Snow over the course of the day can melt off because they're tracking.
You're a comedian too.
So our operations and maintenance team, we can put a program in place to remove snow if it comes to that. But a lot of times, even in-
Diesel power.
So we, to your question, we own and operate three facilities in Northern Canada. The way that is dealt with is both with the O and M staff, but with a tracker system, it rotates throughout the day. At the beginning of the day, it's at an angle, so unless those, the snow will slough off. In addition, as it accumulates, we have enough height there so that the leading edge does not get caught where the snow is accumulating. To your point, the amount, I cannot speak to that. But as it gets colder, those panels actually increase in efficiency.
Increase in efficiency?
Correct.
It's surprising, but under seventy-seven degrees, it's more efficient than when it's hot. So it's counterintuitive that they do.
What does it do with a nice storm or hailstorm? What, how does it damage you with the hailstorm?
So with a nice storm, it would be the-
You're going to get ice buildup on it? You're going to, how are you going to produce? You're not going to be able to tip that to where you're going to generate?
So, yeah, the same situations with the snow, where our O and M team would have to deal with that. In addition, unless the ice impacts the drive train, which it most likely will not because it's a mechanical system, and we'd have to, to be frank, we sell power, so somebody has to be out there to make sure it's, it's operating effectively because we have contracts. The ice would still be able to be penetrated because it's a UV ray. To your second question about the hail, there's a variety of things we can do to stow it and take it offline prior to when it hits because we have integrated meteorological systems that are tracked from Austin directly in the same way that the facility that I'm assuming you built with Keywit, both in Carlisle.
And not-
Yeah, I know. I used to do all that stuff, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
So again, we're getting close. We need to end the meeting. But would you like to say something in closing?
I just want to thank you all for coming and for caring about your community and coming to learn about solar and giving us a chance to hear some of the questions and concerns that you have.
And so for those of you that were not able to come up and ask the questions and those on Zoom, we will collect the information from the company. We will get it on our website, give you the opportunity to do emailing back and forth with the company. And hopefully, you know, again, if you, if we need another workshop, then we can do another workshop here or perhaps in your communities. If you have community buildings, we can, you can set something up with them and have the company come out and talk to the folks in your town, make it more convenient for more folks in your area to, to be able to talk to the company. So thank you so much for coming, and then we're going to take a little recess. And then we'll start the commissioners' meeting at six o'clock. Thank you.